Sorry Beth. Is there a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing possible litigation, security protocols, and to return to open session?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, Michael P. Solomon.
Aye, Tony DeGores.
I'm Michelle Duhart.
I'm Caroline Africano.
We will return at approximately 5:45. I'm gonna call the meeting back to order. Are there any comments and statements from the public before we get started? Onto the informational agenda, I don't see Danny. Mrs. Tudelo, do you know if Danny is gonna be joining us ever?
Danny is so busy.
I know he is. You have put a bug in his ear, maybe if he can come once a month or something, or send somebody else? Onto the December enrollment update.
You have the enrollment figures for December. Looking year to year, we're down. In fact, I got the foundation enrollment figures for FY14, meaning the number that they're gonna use to calculate Chapter 70. Sixteen fifty-seven, down twenty-eight students from last year's foundational enrollment of sixteen eighty-five. If you have any questions. You also have the attendance numbers, as you can see, they're all in the high nineties except for the preschoolers, which in this last few weeks have lots of sickness, although it's turning for the better. We actually, I think we did fairly well. I wait to see the January numbers, will probably be a little, there'll be a lot more absences. We had about a week or so of high absenteeism, we think, in part because we'd always sent a lot of kids homesick at the beginning of January, so.
I have a couple of questions. Macumber School, down forty-two students, that's predominantly that big class that moved from K up to one with a smaller class coming in, correct?
Yes.
High school enrollment being down twenty-eight students, I'm assuming some of that accounts for the students, the increased population or enrollment that Diamond took? One, and two, what was the graduating class last year?
I don't have that with me. It was a little under, it was a little over a hundred, like?
I think one-ten.
One-ten?
It was an average class. But a good portion of that is Mac, twenty, at least twenty, thirty students?
Yeah, we had an average-sized class leave and we didn't get as many kids in. We did lose a few in the middle school to the high school. Actually, Diamond is up, I actually may have that. Probably have it on my computer. Diamond is up a couple of students and Bristol Aggie is, Diamond is up, Bristol Aggie is down a couple of students.
Anybody? Any questions?
Yeah, Diamond is up five students, Bristol Aggie, no, Diamond's up five students, Bristol Aggie went down four.
So it's just about a wash?
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on this? Onto FY12 Title I CPR.
The Title I Office does their own part of the CPR review. It's the coordinate program review. We had presented to you the ELL portion, the civil rights, and the special ed portion of that CPR review. The Title I people do it at a different pace, in a different way. They actually don't come here, we send them all the information, either electronically or paper-wise. They review it, they give us ideas of what needs to be fixed. And what I just wanted to present to you is that, basically, they had a few items, you can see them on the second page. And as you can see on the top page, as soon as we had had those items, again, because they tell us pretty much before they walk out what the items are, we had pretty, we had basically fixed them already. So just wanted you to know that that part of the review is done and Mr. DeFusco fixed everything that they had signed with us.
Any questions on this, comments?
Yeah, so this is the program that's, Mr. DeFusco oversees?
Yep.
So he's directly in contact with the agency on a regular basis?
Yep.
This indicates we're in good standing?
Absolutely.
So I just wanted to make mention and thank Doc, Mr. DeFusco, for keeping up with that segment. I know he's been with the system quite a while, he's not here this evening, I know he's only part-time with us and we're lucky to have him, so, thank you.
Anything else? Onto the FY14 budget update, the building base needs tools.
I have all the administrators here, just in case you wanna ask questions. One of the things that we tried to do was present the budget in a slightly different way. At this point, we had gone through the buildings and then the different departments that support the work of the buildings, try to figure out what the needs were and put some dollar values to those. You've had presentation from the principals, you've had presentations from the departments. What I tried to do was to put it in a summary form as to what would be allocated to each of the schools if we approached it from the building-based needs requests and tallied it up on the last page. You have one page for the Mac, one page for the elementary, middle, and high school. I kept the priorities of the principals at the top part of each of those lists with the additional department requests or needs towards the bottom. There are a few things that I have since been able to talk for the most part with the principals about additions. So for example, at the high school, I know Mrs. Tudelo, I had had discussions earlier in the year about the AD, the activities supervisor, how hard it's been this year to literally work with a part-time person that has a day job here in the school. And it may get even more difficult in the spring because the person also wants to coach. So there were some additions that I put in as what I see as needs for the high school, although they're up for discussion. Then on the last page, I basically-
I got lost on that one.
Yeah, go ahead Mike.
I got lost on that one. We started talking about a particular part-time person and that's where I got a little bit sidetracked. I just think it might make sense at this stage of this process, before we begin to discuss part-time positions at the high school, that we refer this to the Budget Subcommittee. We haven't had an opportunity to review this and at this stage, we have a total school budget with a 9.1% increase and I think the first next step would be to review it with our Budget Subcommittee. So on the form of motion, I'd ask that we refer the whole packet to the Budget Subcommittee, have an immediate meeting, and then come back to the final stage. I don't think we wanna get into line items such as part-time employees tonight.
Is that actually, is that a-
That part isn't the motion, that's a subpart of the one, that was, do you need me to repeat the motion?
I'm just curious if you're making a formal motion.
Yes, I said.
Okay.
Basically, you want to refer packets to the Budget Subcommittee and then come back to the Subcommittee?
Is there a second on Michael's motion? No, second?
No, but for the record, at our last meeting, I, we did suggest that we have a meeting before this meeting to go over this. Whether it was a Budget Subcommittee meeting or just another school committee meeting.
In fact, I think my notes showed that you wanted the building principals to go back with these to the school councils and their staff. And I was just trying to prepare it in a way that would show all the requests for needs at their building level so they could begin that process because they also would have to call meetings. I have a superintendent's coffee for, I think, the thirtieth at the elementary school and I was going to suggest inviting the school councils to that so that the principals wouldn't have to each try to generate additional meetings, but if you wanna have a meeting with the Subcommittee and then the committee.
No, what I, are you presenting a budget this evening, is that what this is, or is it?
I was presenting the work that we have done so far in a format that would be acceptable.
Right, but the work we've done so far is what I'm asking, if this is the budget, it should then go to the Subcommittee because that's what the Subcommittee had left it at. So has this gone out to the school councils now that it's in this formatted?
The only ones who have this are the principals.
Okay, so, I just-
If that's the process-
When you started talking about part-time positions, I just didn't understand additions to a budget that-
I was just trying to explain what was on the sheets, not present anything in particular, just explaining how the sheets work. If you want the process to be that we bring it to the Subcommittee and then to the committee and then to the school councils, then we can do it that way. Just looking to see how you wanna proceed.
I think it needs to go to the school councils next, was what-
School councils or the Budget Subcommittee?
Carolina?
My preference would be is that we as a school committee need to see all of this, that this process of chopping it up just makes more confusion. And it creates more work as this stuff gets presented four times. We're the ultimate deciding body with regard to what happens to the budget. I think it needs to come to the full committee.
My only concern, the only reason I brought up that other meeting last week was that instead of trying to chop this up out of regular school committee, we kinda do that ahead of time, but do you guys wanna, it's here in front of me, so if we're gonna chop it up, let's go through it today. It's here now, so we'll just have that discussion today.
So this is, but this isn't the budget, that's what I, that's, I'm just trying to figure out what we're chopping up here.
This is for discussion, this is-
I thought this, what I'm trying to do is not chop anything up, but speed it up. I thought this went to the, so this should go to-
Well, we're here today, so let's speed it up.
No, no, it's gotta go to the school council, or, I thought this came from the school council, that's what I don't understand.
Well, I think the school councils gave input on, with the principals, the way I understand it, already, on what they wanted to see a few weeks back, remember we had a presentation?
Okay, then the next step, if the school council doesn't need any more input, was to go to the Subcommittee. That's why my email last week was asking to schedule a Subcommittee meeting and it didn't happen. Now, we're going line by line through fifty pages of a budget that we don't wanna title yet? Is it Draft One? I don't know what this is.
To whom? You to send me an email asking for a Budget Subcommittee?
You're not on the Budget Subcommittee.
No, I know that, I'm saying-
I don't need to send you an email for the Budget Subcommittee, you're always invited. Once we get it posted, you're invited, I just wanted it posted.
Just making sure I didn't miss something, but I did.
No, no, the next step in the process, in particular on the site-based approach we're taking, is to-
Can I explain where we are?
Yeah, I interrupted you on something about a part-time position at the high school that you added in, but I don't know what you added it to, I'm just trying to get a title for this.
Right, can we go through school, I think we're here, I'd like to discuss this. People tune in on Wednesdays, they know we have school committee, this is a town budget, a school budget. Not that we hide things by going to a Budget Subcommittee because we're not suggesting that, but it's not sometime when people are necessarily going to tune in so they could potentially miss something.
Well, I can't tune in because I don't think we're not-
It's true.
We're live? Okay, we are live, good.
But can we go school by school and take a look, at least breaking it down a little bit more so we can understand what it is that we are being proposed for a budget and why? I think that's probably the best way to go about doing this.
What you have is a collection of all the needs from the principals and the departments. Last week, what we did is we divided them by building, so we had to do a little research, in particular with things like technology, like what's being asked for what building, the same thing for some of the curriculum and some of the, some of the sped requests. So we had to allocate costs to each of the buildings, when that was completed, it got included in the packet. Since then, we've had a few other things that we've come up against. So for example, we discovered that the, our technology that stores a lot of our information, including emails and the information that staff create and then try to save from the whiteboards, is basically choking our system, so we added additional items to this list. That's what you have in your Blot revised 12313. It's just a couple of things added to that, some software. So in each of those lists, what I put at the top is so that the principals can work through these lists with the school councils, including the departmental needs, not just the building-level needs, because the departments have needs at each of the buildings. I basically put up at the top the contractual obligations, that gets repeated on every page, so when the principals go and talk to the school councils and the staff, they can understand that the contractual obligations alone, if we change nothing, if we keep the same staff and just roll it one year to the next, could potentially go as high as $400,000, $416,000. Then underneath that, I put for each building, the list of needs for each building and try to total it at the end. The actual detailed budget is the rest of that big document. At the back of that document, I also included the list of staff by building. So if people say, well, how come we need more math teachers or kindergarten teachers or, you know, who did we have three years ago, who we don't have, kinda trying to give a history of where our staffing is because our staffing drives the budget in large part. So if you wanna go building by building, I, we can do that and we can bring the principals to the table and just go over the list of the needs and ask whatever questions you have. You've seen most of this.
I think that's gonna be the most organized way to do it, break it up by building, so why don't we-
Could we each address the question, please, or we make a decision? He asked a question of the school committee or just the chappers? Because I, again, he just asked, you know, the way to do it, the way to do it. I didn't know we were going over all these, this is ready for submission to the town, is that?
When you tell me it's ready, I will submit it to the town.
A pseudo-budget hearing now when we haven't sent it to the Subcommittee that we established by vote of this school committee. The next step is to go to the Budget Subcommittee. And we've got additions, including today. We've got some additions to this budget dated July 23rd. So I, I'm on the Budget Subcommittee, but I'm having trouble understanding how to look at this and now we're talking about which pages do we wanna look at? Why don't we have our Subcommittee take a good strong look at this and be ready for-
So, so what's gonna happen, Mike, at the Subcommittee? You're gonna decide things that just get cut and we never see them at this table?
No, we make suggestions. We've gone over how a Subcommittee works. The Subcommittee reviews it in detail and gets a-
And tried, last year, the Subcommittee tried to take things off the table. And not present them to the entire school committee.
Okay, historically, there was one Subcommittee that I was on and they were able to save closing a school on the budget that was put forward. Because the budget that was put forward included closing a school.
Actually, the-
So that's what they took off the table.
The school committee, all five members did that.
You just asked about last year's Subcommittee.
Yep.
And that was the suggestion that the Subcommittee came up with and yes, the whole school committee adopted it. So I'm suggesting we follow that process. As a co-chair of the Budget Subcommittee, I sent a request to post it, unfortunately, it didn't get posted and so we can have a Budget Subcommittee in two or three days.
Sure.
That did not get posted because that request was taken on Friday and we asked for the minutes to hold on the Tuesday. And that's how it 48-hour notice amended to the holiday, that's what happened.
Okay, so the next available date would be fine, I think, and there were other dates, I think, on the initial request that went forward. Two time slots.
Carolina?
I'm here, I've got a budget in front of me, let's just go through it. I can't come to your Budget Subcommittee meeting, maybe. You do them mostly during the day. I work in Boston, I am here now, this is the school committee meeting. I am part of the people who decide what the budget looks like. I would like to hear from the principals what is on these sheets of paper. You wanna have a Budget Subcommittee and talk about it separately? That's fine, but I'm here tonight, I'd like to deal with this. We're just wasting time right now.
Can we have, can we start with Macumber and work our way up?
Could I make a suggestion? You have something on the agenda that you might have some people in attendance for that you might wanna take up?
I actually don't have a problem with that. Yeah.
Because we'll be here for a while, I'm sure.
Can we postpone this until later in the evening? And Mr. Johnkis, can you come up? Jump to the action portion of our agenda for one piece, one item? Good suggestion, Mike. This is for the approval of a $25,000 grant from the Greater Follower Development. Paul Johnkis?
Yes.
You've got the floor.
I'm just here representing the Greater Follower Development Corp. I'm the chairman of the Education Committee and the school committee of the school department submitted a grant for $25,000 toward SAT, not SSG, for rest day software to increase SAT scores. It was approved and I'm here to deliver the check and also tell you that we do review grants twice a year and we'd love to see some more grants from Westport, as a Westport resident and several members on the board being Westport residents, we'd love to see some more grants for technology and different things that we can help all the schools with.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Your word.
It is very much appreciated and we'll definitely be-
I'll take that.
Will definitely be put to good use. Is there a motion to accept this grant?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you very, very much.
You're welcome.
That is a very large sum of money and we are very much appreciated.
Thank you, sir, good job.
Thank you very much.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
He wants a picture, go ahead. Go behind, go behind, you can hold the check, give it to her.
Dana?
Photo up, photo up.
I'll switch this way. Carolina, you too? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right, a bit of a break in the action. For some good stuff. Okay, back to the budget. And this is not a decision on the budget, this is just some discussion so we can understand what's going on. So can we start with Mac and have Julie come up?
Julie?
Can I also ask that if you talk about or refer to something in the packet, point to where you're at so that we can all follow a little easier?
We're going through the part that says revised 123. I'll point out the pieces that have been added.
The one that was on the blotter.
Right, but I'll point out the ones that were added so that if people have looked at the one online, they'll see it and we will post this. It wasn't posted, so this will be posted in, this will be posted.
Will be posted.
Will be posted online.
Yeah, will be posted.
We talked about people tuning in, I guess they can't pull it up online tonight, huh?
Well, we can certainly go through the old one, I can tell you pieces that should be added to the old one either way.
I know it wasn't even posted yesterday, right? I mean, when was the whole budget posted?
That was part of the school committee posting, so it was on, yes, it was on.
The original email said it wasn't posted yet.
Okay, this will get posted online.
The school committee packet was posted.
Yes, the school committee packet was posted, this was not.
Right, but when the notice of the meeting was posted, the budget was not available, okay? We didn't have the appropriate number of days to even look at this because we were advised it was not gonna be on the link for a day.
The personnel down portion of it was not going to be-
Yes.
Right, portion of it, so the budget was-
The budget was on-
Online.
Online, there's been a separate, if you look on your, pretend there's-
FY13 personnel.
The FY13 personnel, because they're separate documents.
So some of the budget wasn't available.
The entire budget.
The Budget Subcommittee asked to meet and didn't and, so let's go over that page, I guess.
Hi.
Is this the page?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's the one page we're gonna talk about?
Yeah.
It's been a while since we've seen you as far as budget. You all had submitted some thoughts on what you wanted and why and I'm curious as to how this is different, is this the same thing that we were presented with and why you need these things?
Sure, it's very similar to what I presented. There was a couple, there was one thing that I was remiss in writing down, which was the math supply line, which is that top line. There was a 4,000 because we gave that up last year, so I completely was remiss and my fault in not including that. So obviously, that is a number one, so that we can get our math supplies. Two is the K teacher. I actually have a, the class size, I apologize, I didn't give this to you, but it's kind of something that I have, if you'd like it. The class size in the past has been, based on the census, and we always give about 10%, we're actually at 25 right now as of, within the next few weeks, we will be at 25. We're just waiting for some paperwork on some of the kids coming in.
What do you mean 25?
Students for core class. So we're at five teachers, we're at 25, so we would like to go back to the six because next year's census is 87. However, it is anticipated that we go up to about 115 just because of, I'm just going by, based on what's going on every other year. And that would bring our class size down. The kindergarten class size has to be at an average of 25 based on the master and the law, but that's an average of 25, so I mean, we've gotten-
Twenty-four, 26.
Right, or, I mean, we do include the multi-age preschool room, which, I mean, the kindergarten room, which brings it down. But just to add that.
So you're at five right now?
I'm at five, I'd like to go to six, so that's the addition.
How many students this year?
We have 122, we're going up to 124.
And you're anticipating around 115 next year?
Right, but we'd like to bring down class sizes just because we think that we're at 25 at this point. You never know what's coming in. Okay. Summer school services, there's actually a test called the Brigance Test. It's a screening test that we use for our entering kindergarten students and what we'd like to do is any of the students that are kind of falling low on the Brigance Test, we'd like to take them and give them kind of some intensive support services. We found that many of them have not had any preschool because preschool is not universal. just as full day K isn't. And we'd like to be able to at least give them some kind of foundation. We are noticing many of these students are coming in with no foundation. And I do have numbers, by the way, of kids that are coming in that are doing very well on the Brigance, this Brigance Test, that are in our preschool. I mean, the numbers are very good, so, just to give you an idea. And I'm just going by low Brigance scores. This is the one specific score. That about 30% of the kids, I'm sorry, 10% of the kids that are really doing, you know, the low Brigance, were from our preschool. So 90% of the kids that are coming in, you know, could use some extra help. And that is determined upon what we're talking about. And then that brings us to another, an additional pre-K teacher. Again, building capacity, trying to maintain something that has always been pretty, I mean, I'm not sure Dr. Colley would know better than I am about cost effectiveness and cost neutral, but something that, you know, will give, build our capacity. An RTI teacher or an interventionist, right now we have a part-time reading specialist that only deals with the Title I students. We'd like that to be able to go out to students that are not just qualifying for Title I, but students that are, you know...
On the bubble but don't quite qualify but need the help.
Exactly, right, exactly. And someone that is full-time, so, you know, something like that would be very beneficial to us, so that we can close those gaps early on. Because as I'm saying, you know, as we're seeing earlier and earlier, for example, just to give you an example, when I was in school, you learn, when you went to kindergarten, you learned about the ABCs, et cetera. We all know that things have kind of gotten bumped up a bit. Well, preschool actually has their own common core, and part of that common core is that they have to learn about money. Okay? When they come to kindergarten, they're expected to know their numbers, know what each of the denominations of coins are. Well, that's not going to happen if they haven't had any preschool. So that's, that's why we're, that's why we're trying to say, hey, listen, we need to focus on some of these foundational skills, so that when the kids are coming in, we need to give them the best foundation. So that's where the interventionist comes in and the power as well, which is the next line. Were you gonna, I'm sorry?
I just had a question.
Sure.
You said we have a part-time position now? Would this be in addition to that part-time position?
Correct, based upon that budget. Because this person would not be for specifically the title.
Okay.
If you've been reading anything in the news, obviously, I'm sure you all have, but the DESE and the EEC have come up with the MKEA. So if you want to follow all those little letters, the acronym, obviously, the DESI and the Early Education Care. So we're, we're under Early Education Care and DESI. And they've come up with this MKEA. And Commissioner Killens wants us to administer, it's the Massachusetts Kindergarten Entry Assessment. And it's basically a assessment for the first six to eight weeks of kindergarten. It's going to be mandated, it's going to be mandated, from what I've heard, by 2014. And they would like us to start, be part of the cohort. And Dr. Colley and Dr. Darden and I have been discussing this. I talked with the teachers about it and what that looks like. And it's basically the Teaching Strategies Gold, which I know, Ms. Stewart, you remember those reports. So, and it's quite a bit of work for the teachers. It's, it's very labor-intensive. And that is where the assessment development comes in. Because it is, basically, they have to look at a child and say, okay, this, let's say he's playing with the blocks. Well, where does that fit in the over 200 categories that they have to figure out in the first six to eight weeks? And they have to figure out where that goes. And they have to write down Johnny is playing with blocks for each of their students, for each of the 200 different things. So it's kind of like the NAYC accreditation for each child has to go through this. So that's what's coming down the pike, so we've been asked as a RTT grant.
So they're going to, again, be testing a one, is it a one-on-one? Is that what?
This specific, it's the teaching, we have a choice of two, Teaching Strategies Gold or Work Sampling System. We already use Teaching Strategies Gold in preschool, so we would probably go towards that, just because it's something that we're familiar with. It is not as one-on-one, it's more, I mean, I can certainly get into it into detail. Basically, what it is, is Gross Motor Day, okay? They go in and they play various games and they're looking for certain things. And once they check it off, they go to the next level of it. So it's not just, okay, Johnny can skip, but then it's, well, first it's Johnny can walk, Johnny can skip. And it moves across a continuum. And in order for the teacher to check off the final part of the continuum, they have to have done all these other things, unless you know where the baseline is. So it is very time-consuming.
So I, I just, this is just a footnote for me. We're testing and assessing our kids so much that we're taking time away from them to be able to teach.
I absolutely agree.
Okay.
I'm not, I didn't...
I know you didn't make it up.
That's okay.
I know.
My, many of the test, the assessment portion can be done while watching kids, watching them play, watching them interact, there's a social piece. It's, I, what I think, what my biggest concern is, is that it will take up, so it's not like a devils or running record where you're sitting with the kids and it's actually taking out time, but it will take a considerable amount of time for the teachers to do all this record-keeping. And that is, and if you want to, I don't know necessarily whether is that the best use of their time, I'm not sure. So this is cohort two, and like I said, Dr. Colley, Dr. Darden and I are kind of talking about it and what is going to happen with that.
And the technology?
There, it's an, there's an iPad app that without it, preschool is finding it would be nearly impossible. So that's where that technology comes in. The before and after-school care, I have the paperwork that I gave to Dr. Colley about if you were interested in running a program like that. And I don't know whether that's still something of interest to you. I know that Mr. Rivera, she expressed some interest in us doing something like that. And the writing program, I know that that's kind of across the district, wanting to improve our...
Can we also ask questions or just...
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I was just running right there.
No, I just didn't know if you wanted me to go through the chair or what. We just talked about before and after-school daycare. And we've indicated, and now, now this is on the building-based needs request. Okay, so, so we put down zero, we don't need anything, but it, so I just don't see it as reflecting anything on the budget, is that correct?
You're absolutely right, Mr. Solon. However, my concern is that it need, the reason why I would like to put it on a budget line is because there, there might be some needs that get drawn out of it, but I want to make sure that we can kind of recoup that.
Yeah, but do you recall my view on expanding the services at the Mac Hummer for before and after-school care? And what do you recall that as? That I was opposed to it, without seeing a complete business plan. And so now to have it put in on a budget as a line item zero, and an indication that perhaps the school committee might want off of those services, I just think it's an inappropriate time, at least, to start to talk about expanding services that we haven't fully engaged in. To me, that's outside the budget.
Okay.
So if there's any other items that still need to go through any other process, you know, we've looked at that before. I'm not saying my view is, is the prevailing view, but I was very clear on that last spring about expanding before and after-school care. So now that we're going to have a budget, series of meetings and hearings apparently in public, I thought there was a different process, but now we're going to start to talk about new program expansion. So that one is a zero, really doesn't have any impact.
Right, I, because I just wanted to put it down there because I felt...
It's a policy decision. It's a, you know, we're going to expand some things.
Right, no, I guess because there's...
I get it.
Outgoing hiring teachers and that kind of thing, that the zero was just based on hoping that we would at least kind of make whatever we had to recoup. That's why it was, I put it down on the budget. Okay. And then the ELL training for teachers, that would be because of, again, a new mandate that's coming down the pike with the ELL and the behavioral intervention teacher. We all share that same person throughout the district, so that's why it's a point at this point.
Anything else on this for Julie? Thank you.
You're welcome. Hello. Hello.
This is a little shorter than your list a few weeks ago.
Yes, it is. And what I'm just going to point out is just the, anything that we went back to our staff and asked for, any kind of additions or anything else. And so on this budget, basically, the, the three top things that we had actually prioritized the last time that we had presented have remained the same. The two teachers for, two additional classrooms, library media specialist to be a full-time position, and then the .5 special ed teacher. The things that are, that have been added, an RTI teacher, which Julie Pasetto just sort of gave the exact same explanation. It's simply to have someone that is going to be available to close gaps, especially with our first and second graders, so that we can address those gaps, so that we don't see learning problems and academic gaps as they move on in school. A summer school service, we do have a special ed summer school that is mandated for children with special needs. But we were thinking that if we could, it would be great to offer summer school services for kids who just need to have that time to be able to hone their skills, as well as make sure that some of those skills that they've, they've worked so hard to maintain throughout the year, with that 10-week gap that we don't have, what we call the summer slide. So this would be primarily in reading and math. And it would be programs that would be run by the teachers, run by the school. The teachers would be, would be providing the, the teaching services. And it probably, as again, would probably primarily be in math and reading.
Parents asking for that?
Parents are asking for it. We do usually have a Title I program that runs. The problem with the Title I program is that very often, we don't know if we're going to have the funding until the very, very end of the school year, which we're sort of at the 11th hour trying to get out notification. And so we were just thinking that if we knew upfront that we were going to have something like this, we could let parents know, especially at the, as the third trimester, at the progress report time, at third trimester, a child who's still having difficulty could say, you know, there is going to be a summer program, rather than sending out notices the day before school lets out, which is unfortunate, that that's the way it's been, because we've waited for the, to find out whether the funding would be available or not.
And the Title I program would just be for the Title I kids?
Title I program is just for Title I kids. This would, this would be for all children. Yes, yep, exactly. And I think just in, in general, it would be kind of, we would certainly be academic-based, but we would be using some games and computers and different things that would be educational, but still be, you know, enticing to the kids and motivating to the kids. And then we have technology. The technology is just simply something that, because we were asked to do it building by building, the Ames Web subscription was not in the, the previous presentation that Mr. Gastal and I had done. So that's just there because Ames Web is how we keep track of our data. The teachers and the input the data, and that would be for ELA and math. And that's how we keep track of the data of, you know, how the kids are progressing along in those two subjects. And ELL training for teachers, which is exactly what Julie just said, that is mandated by the state, so we do have to incorporate that. And then also the behavioral intervention teacher, which again, we share that among the four schools. So that would be the only additions to what we had already presented to you. If you have any questions.
Carolina?
The common planning time?
Mm-hmm.
What is that, to bring people into the classroom so that the teachers can...
It would be more or less, not necessarily to bring them into the classroom, but last year, we were able to have lunchtime supervisors, so that they came into the cafeteria to supervise the students, and then actually, with the help of, of other staff, supervised them at recess, which allowed the teachers to be able to have about 25 minutes of common planning time, and we did that three times a week.
Michael? Just a quick question. I appreciate the thoroughness of your presentation.
Thank you.
And I noticed that we did have some funding for tablets?
Yes.
And although that's, you know, a major move, what's, three years, four years, what do we anticipate that those tablets will serve for?
Primarily, that would be for first and second grade. First and second grade with the tablets would be basically iPads. We are hoping to be able to have at least five per classroom, so that there are so many applications that the kids can use now, as well as with the smart boards, which are part of the, which we have obviously put into each of the classrooms. The iPads would sort of be, they would go in, in relationship with the smart boards. So not every child, obviously, not every child would have a tablet, but they would be available so that they could use, the teachers could use them as centers, as wordwork and, and different types of applications on those, on those tablets. So they would be staying with the first and second grade.
And we think we'll get three, four years out of them. Textbooks, we get 10 years out of.
Right, exactly. I know, I know. Yeah, probably, I would hope about four years.
I'd like to make a comment on the tablets. And maybe even the school committee could take a field trip someday over to one of the schools and actually see some of the younger kids and what they're doing on it, so that, I mean, I understand, because I volunteer in the classroom, so I actually see what the kids are doing on it. But the nice thing about the tablets is that you're seeing more and more kids do it at home.
That's right.
And I know, so there's some consistency to it versus a book that they may have. I know you've talked about your son doing the, you know, the 3,000.
Achieve 3,000.
At home, that he's doing at school. And I know my son has been doing the story of, he reads the stories at home, he does them there, as well as the RAS kids. So we have the, the apps at home. He's reading, he's able to act, and his teacher can see, oh, look, he's done it this night, this night, this night, or not. And I can actually write little notes to him, so that when he goes on at school, he'll get a little note that says something from me.
Exactly, yeah.
So, you know, this is good or bad, this is where it seems that things are going.
This is where it's going, it is.
It's definitely more expensive, no question about it.
Absolutely, but I think the, the great thing is that they're, they are, they're so able to be moved around the classroom, you don't have to set up additional table space, which, you know, certainly is an, is an issue in the classroom. You know, you can take the, the kids can take them from desk to desk. They are, you know, they, they really are very, very respectful of the equipment. You see them using it, you see them using it with the little headphones and the microphones. And, yeah, I would, I would actually, to go along with what Mrs. Duarte said, I would also encourage you to come to the building and really get an opportunity to see the kids, those, those six, seven, and eight-year-olds manipulating those iPads, unbelievable. And then in addition to that, see the connection that the teacher is making with whole-class instruction using the smart board. So anytime you want to come, just let us know.
I've been there.
Okay, great.
I look forward to going back.
Good.
Anything else?
Any other questions?
Just one last thing. For those who have looked online or have the original budget documents, the only thing we added to the elementary school is the $4,000 Ames Web subscription, because we didn't have that price yet.
Right.
So if you have the old documents, you would need to add $4,000 at the elementary school. That was one change that we did make.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, the middle school. The sheet you have in front of you, from supplies all the way down to equipment, that's what I spoke about earlier. And it's also in the, the priority that the middle school, school council, everyone that had input wants it to be in. The middle school PCB testing down are the items that were added. Do you have any questions on the items that I've already spoken about before that you want me to recap or talk about again, because you might have forgot, or?
Foreign language teacher, what would that be an implementation of? Have you looked at Spanish?
We haven't looked at it that far yet. It would be an exploratory teacher, very similar to what they had before, I want to say, four or five years ago. There was a Spanish teacher, that was an exploratory teacher, and the kids would rotate through and learn Spanish.
So, you would be able to utilize the books and whatever?
Whenever we have left over, yes, we still have it there.
What grade is, what grade is that, what grades?
That would be five through eight. So, every student would rotate through similar as they do phys ed, art, music.
Right now, they have an extra rotating block, that they have something double, correct, or?
Jingle music or art.
They, yes, there are.
And that's where it was.
Students that have multiple phys eds or multiple musics, yes, you're right. And that would take the place of something like that.
So, once a week?
Once a week, they.
Every child would have Spanish.
Yeah. Or, it could be Chinese.
Michael?
Yeah, I, just before we go further, I think I understood what you said, that up to a certain point.
If the equipment.
The equipment is, is the format that you presented the last time.
Yes.
Which I saw that before, that it was very similar. And in terms of the format, I just, we haven't, or have we gotten to the point where we really have a site-based budget? Because on every page, we've got the, you know, the increase in contractual obligations, and we have a percentage for that. But do, do we kind of know for our school, what our contractual obligations are? I mean, because that's.
For the middle school, it's the 416 number?
No, that is for the whole.
No, that's what I'm saying. These formats are, I just, this is kind of a tool in the middle, I think, but, so, as far as your school site budget, do you know what your increase in steps and lanes is?
Me, no, I don't.
Okay, that's.
Is that a breakdown? You want that breakdown, because we can.
Breakdown.
No, I'm not, I'm not defining the standard accounting principles, I'm simply saying that a site-based budget includes everything assigned, its costs. And I think we're working that in.
Well, it's a, it's about 2.74 percent.
System-wide.
Do you want to go over some of the new things?
That's not a site-based budget.
Okay. When you look down from the, the middle school PCB testing, all the way down to the sped transportation, those are not in an order of priority, and they're not mixed in as an order of priority. There are some things here, like the sped tuition, sped transportation, that we have to do. They're mandated. There are certain things, you know, regulations that we have to do, like, for example, like Julie and Chris talked about, the ELL training, that's something we have to do. And the behavioral intervention teacher, that's my portion of behavioral intervention teacher. Everything else, I can go down the list. Math textbooks, that's looking at a new math program, that would be my portion of what that program would look at. Right now, we're looking at Go Math. The pre-AP training, that's something that we hooked up with the high school, very excited about that. That's something to train our teachers, maybe not per se to be teaching AP classes at the middle school, but to have that training. Cheryl has, Mrs. Tudelo has talked about how fabulous the training is, a lot of the teachers have gone through it, and they really like it, and it just enhances your, your everyday teaching. The writing program, very similar to the math textbooks. Spoke about the ELL training for the teachers. Classroom computers, we were next in line for computers. We have not received new computers at the middle school for, you know, quite some time. And according to Mrs. Lewis, she's been going through rotating, I think, the high school received new computers, the elementary had, we were next, so that's what that line item is. Wi-Fi access, as you know, the middle school is made of, of concrete, and the Wi-Fi has tough time getting through the concrete and the lead, and, you know, Superman would have troubles getting through there, you know? So, that's just, you know, adding those, those access points on, and anticipation for the 2014 park assessment, where we have to be taking it online, we're going to have to be doing that. Behavioral intervention teachers, sped tuition and sped transportation.
Any questions on this?
Is there anything you need me to elaborate on?
The classroom computers, that is the, the actual desktop computers or whatnot that the teachers use, is that, with that?
I'm thinking that's a mix of those and the lab.
Okay.
Well, I guess maybe for Dr. Colley, the PCB testing and monitoring, why, why would that be in his budget? I know it's his school, but.
It happens in his building.
Yeah.
That's what. Where would you like me to put it?
District, I don't know. Is that, is that where, where it all comes out of now? Comes out of the middle school budget?
Well, no, you wanted to do this budget differently, at this point, it comes out of the.
A site-based budget would indicate the building it's in. And again, those aren't how we want it, it's the standard accounting principles of a site-based budget, and I thought we shared that information with you.
That's fine, just a question, doesn't matter where you put it.
And in this, in, if you're using the old documents, the middle school would have to add 2,000, 2,400 for the Galileo software. There are some licenses there as well. We have to project how many students would use it, because I think it's a per, per student license.
Now, the, the pre-AP training, is there a possibility that that could be funded by that grant, if we get that? Or is that in addition to?
No, if we would get the grant, we'd probably back this out.
Okay. When are we going to know?
I don't know at this point. We've been, we've submitted everything.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just, we're seeing here the subtotal for the school site, is, is the total of these new needs? Is that?
That's the new needs and?
The new needs would be the 512,540.
Which are additional to?
To what was in the budget.
Current level service budget.
Yes.
So, the 3.38 increase is over what? I see the 3.3.
Would be an increase of 3.3 over this year's budget total.
Which has got anything to do with the 512?
512 is 3.38 percent increase over last year's budget.
On just these line items, that we decided is what we'll call the base needs request? It's not all the costs associated with that site, then?
No.
In other words, we're not saying our, our school building is going to cost 3.38 percent more to increase. This is 3.38 percent increase of a very select, I shouldn't say very select, a, a list of items that we're increasing. But I, I just, that's why I had a little trouble understanding even the, the focus of this list, because 3.38 percent is, is on, on these line items.
Yes.
Doesn't talk about the cost of heating the building.
No, because.
That's what I'm saying. So, I, I just, this is kind of, I don't understand this practice of going over the items that we're increasing only, and that we're going to increase those items by 3.38 percent. But I don't understand the relative significance to the budget you'll be presenting.
Well, it would mean if, if you want to do these things beyond what we do now, you would need to increase the budget by $500,000. Unless you want to take other things off.
Maybe you didn't understand, I was disagreeing with that, because what I'm saying is, that's on just those items. It doesn't, the, the additional cost or the decrease in oil isn't taken into account.
Well, we're not expecting a decrease in oil or an increase in our cost of oil, so we didn't put it in as a change.
So, everything else is, is levels funded?
We're saying everything else could remain level funded. These are just areas where, at this point, the exercise has been, what are the needs? And we collected the needs, and we.
You're saying, these are the new needs, okay? These are not just the needs, these are the new needs, and that's why I'm, I'm trying to define the difference in our interpretation of what they should say. This is new needs. This is a needs-based budget. That's all I'm, I'm trying to clarify.
That's why it says requests.
I'd like to, to.
This, this says needs requests. These are new requests.
And this isn't just this building, this is a discussion of, of the total understanding as I'm, because otherwise, there's items that.
That.
I guess the question is, 512,000 is, is or is not the total of this line?
It's the total of all those Westport middle school lines.
Okay, but there's other, you're not running the school for 512,000. I'm just trying, because if I went and downloaded this document, or if I handed it out and said, oh, okay, that's what it is.
The bigger document is in.
Right, that's.
In here.
That's.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, last year, as you guys went through your budgets and you chopped your budgets, your supply line was depleted.
That's.
This is bringing that.
Back to what it was.
You're asking, please give me my supplies back, so I can put that back in my budget, and that's what it was last year.
Exactly, that is exactly what that is, yes.
Okay, so, these are items that were in the budget.
That particular one, absolutely, yes.
Previously, now aren't, you're asking for them back, as well as some additional needs that your particular building has, which is 3.38 percent higher than what your current budget is for your school.
Yes, exactly.
Which is 512,540. But that does not break down the contractual increases for that particular school.
No.
The 3.3.
3.3 is over last year's total budget, not.
No, it's his school.
And just on these line items.
It's his school, see?
But just on these items.
That is 1.8 above their budget. Elementary is 2.08 above that one, so this one is raising his budget by 3.38 percent.
Incorrect.
No, the whole budget, the whole entire budget.
The whole entire budget.
His budget. That's not what you have here.
If you add up all those increases, you know, that's the impact of increasing.
Right here, for these.
If you, if you add those in, the impact to the whole budget is 300, 3.38 percent.
Then why does this one say? You're saying 3.38 percent of the $15 million budget? Okay, I got you.
In other words, we only approve this.
I got you. You got three people trying, trying to talk to me, can't. And I got Michael over there going incorrect, which helps things tremendously. Right, I got it, I got it. Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Oh, you're welcome, Mike.
Who's laughing?
Me.
I understood.
Hello. You're always last, one of these days, we'll clip you up and have you first and Julie last.
That's okay, I don't mind.
Okay.
I get to take hints from what they do.
We're not.
Again, except for the items that have the star or the exclamation point, these are things that were submitted earlier. Most of them have to do with either supporting existing initiatives, trying to expand them, particularly in terms of some of our at-risk students, increasing parental involvement by giving them access to grades, attendance, SAT prep class and supplies. But again, we have applied for a grant from the Westport Education Foundation, and that does look very promising. And some of the things that were added, again, are similar to Alex, are things that were taken away last year. And that would be the AD and activities, the director of guidance, and the secretarial support for that. The ELL training, just like the others, and the behavioral intervention is a requirement that's being divided amongst all of the schools. And the Odysseyware is a new software that was purchased last year, that offers students opportunities to enroll in online courses. We are meeting with much success with that this year, in terms of offering more electives to students, in terms of doing credit recovery for students. And just as an option, some students don't have transportation for dual enrollment classes, and so it just provides them with another opportunity for enrichment. Any questions on, either anything that was there or added?
Cheryl, the EAD position. I mean, clearly, we're, we're paying the suffering from not having that as a full-time position now.
It, it is a burden to run a full interscholastic program with a.
We're kidding ourselves if we think we're going to do it with a part-time person.
Correct.
Not saying anything bad about the part-time person, but it's a full-time job.
Well, it's at least a .6 job, you know, if nothing else.
And you also have, you know, one of the things we had discussed was adding also the, the activities. It used to be, we had a position that was exactly that, activities and AD just at the high school, and they had their own secretarial support. That was one of the things we cut a few years back, when we had a whole slew of cuts.
Well, I mean, is, is that even realistic to do it this way? Or should we, to even have the EAD do the activities? I mean, is that something, is that something much more doable than?
I think it's more doable in attracting a person to the position. When we advertised as .2 for each for activities in athletics, it was very difficult. When people realized the stipend, and some of them, you know, factor in travel, depending where they were coming from, it really wasn't worth their while. So, it was difficult to attract somebody. The other issue with even attracting somebody who does it after school, there are many tasks that have to be managed during the school day for both of those positions. Collecting fees, processing paperwork, cancellations, rescheduling, transportation issues, those are things that have to be settled during the school day, especially in the winter with the weather.
I think it's important for people to realize that, you know, you know, unfortunately, the athletics is something that tends to get cut over, you know, other things, rightfully or wrongfully so, but I think it's important that, you know, that position does go to full-time, to, if anything, just to send a message that, you know, we do, you know, we're not just about cutting, we do want to repair some of this damage that's been done over the last few years. You know, I think it's something that we should do. Thank you.
Anything else?
Just that in this one, the additions are the Odysseyware from the papers originally filed online.
Michael?
I noticed you have portable technology, 24,000. I know I've had a, a comment in the past that has, defines, my hope is that we'll have computers in every hand, in, in every high school student's hands. That's, that's my personal approach to where we should be spending technology dollars. I know $24,000 is not going to do that. Have we, have we looked at, at, you know, we've had from some of the other schools, the idea of iPads, and as technology changes and devices change, is there, been identified a need, maybe it didn't make it on the list, but a need for a, a way to put more devices in, in the classroom, whether it be a tablet, a PC, a handheld device? I know it's, has different areas of concern, but what are we doing with the portable technology for 24,000?
I agree with your comments, Mr. Sullivan. I think what we're trying to do with the 24,000 is, right now, we have a set number of laptops available in the media center. In classrooms, regular classrooms, non-technology classrooms, we only have one teacher computer. What ends up happening, especially with students and senior projects, senior project is a monumental task for students. The bulk of the technology that is available in the media center is used primarily by seniors as they prepare for their senior project, doing the research, writing the paper, doing the PowerPoint presentations. So, in essence, it cuts out availability of technology to some of the other students. So, I think, and Mrs. Lewis can join in here, I think what we're trying to do is at least. I think what we're trying to do is at least get something else that we could dedicate... So that we could dedicate one set perhaps for the use for senior project and have the other set available for other classes to use as they see fit. We do have three other computer classrooms that are used, two in the business department, one in the art department. When those are available, which is one block a day, we are also using those for other students to use who are not doing senior project. But it has become very tight schedule-wise. And so, not all students have the accessibility they need.
Can students bring in their own laptops and use them?
We're not there yet. We'd have to run some new policies through this committee and get the wireless sort of secure for that because we still have to adhere to SIPR regulations. And that's kind of a little bit more difficult to do when you don't control the device itself. It's certainly something we're looking into as a possibility. But these carts are the Google Chromebooks, so they're the... They're a much more economical solution than even iPads. So, that's one of the reasons why we're looking at those. So, that actually puts sixty more devices available for circulation in the high school.
So, we're not letting students bring in their own laptops because we have some policies to change? Is that...
Some policies.
Some policies and some infrastr... It's more infrastructure that we need to also boot. Do some students bring in laptops because they're in dual enrollment? Yes, they do. But they're doing things that don't require internet access at the time.
No, I understand. I just, we have some budgets that are putting technology dollars into primary classrooms, and we have high school students waiting for devices. So, if they can bring their own devices in, I think that that's a path we should be encouraging.
What would it take for us to update the infrastructure so that these kids... Because I'm guessing what the draw... I mean, policy is something that we can deal with easy enough, and I think you're referring to bringing the technology into school policy. But the... I'm guessing the problem is their access to the internet and the security. What do we need to do?
That's certainly part of it. It's where do you lock it up when you're not using it? That's another, you know, these are all sort of issues. But one of the things that we are doing in preparation for possibly doing this type of initiative is to get some backend hardware that we can kind of control. Right now, we share some backend hardware with the town. It makes it difficult to configure things because those software changes sort of have to take everything into consideration, and sometimes there's downtime. So, we actually met with Charter, and they're going to give us our own device so that we can better shape some of those rules that control our internet traffic. And then they'll give us more control over the bandwidth. Because I would love to stand up here and say, yes, if every student had their own device, they would only be doing academic work, and there would be, you know, no things going on in the background. But I think we probably all who have cellphones have played a few games when we shouldn't be, or, you know, those kind of things. So, it's really a mindset within the school. And then there's sort of the equity issue. So, you have a class of thirty students, and ten have bring their own device, and twenty don't. You know, I'm not saying it can't be done, and some districts have done it well. Others have had problems with it. And it's one of those things you want to go into with your eyes open and have some good discussions about it. But until we have sort of that infrastructure in the background, it's...
So, the twenty-four is sixty Chromebooks?
Sixty Chromebooks.
Anything else for Mrs. Tudela?
The last page, the only thing we added there is the storage area network. I guess we could break it down by building, but it would mean trying to figure out how much storage each building uses. It doesn't make any sense to get four separate storage devices. But the one we have right now is not failed yet, but it's getting more usage than it was scheduled for. ProTrax is the professional development software. Again, it's a... It's a service. We use it to track who's going to be out for professional development. It keeps track of all the professional development that any staff member has taken. So, when they go and try to redo their certification or licensure, they use that information. Again, we could break it up by who's using it more than others. But we got these numbers in the last couple of days, so we added in here. This is where we tried to add up all the needs requests, new needs requests, if you want to call them that, from each of these, including the contractual obligations. That would add up to one point six mil, bringing the projected budget, if we use these numbers, to sixty million eight. About a ten percent increase.
And I'd just like to throw in there, last year, when we began this exercise, we were at one point eight. One point eight over the prior year, and we ended up cutting six seventy-five. When you add those two together, it's two point four. So, it shouldn't be a surprise to anyone that this first go-around, we're at, you know, ten percent.
And these items are pretty modest.
There are needs we've had. They're not, you know, many of these is...
They're not extravagant, they're relatively modest.
And I think some of these are trying to go back to the cuts that we had some years ago and trying to rebuild some of that infrastructure we had in place or some of the supports that we had in place that we had to do without. I did go to the Chapter Seventy workshop today with the superintendents and took a look at the governor's proposals. We do not stand to gain a huge amount in terms of Chapter Seventy this year. Our increase is only about forty thousand dollars. And that's because they are trying to stick to the requirements on a town-by-town basis in terms of what our contribution should be compared to the state's contribution. The state was contributing a little bit more. But they also added some monies. So, when they reduced the state's contribution, they actually added on the backend because they added twenty-five dollars per student that really didn't fit the formula. They've added some additional funding for special ed students. Let me just make sure I check my notes so I don't forget anything. They've added some increases in terms of the formula for low income. Some increases for pre-K students, only those students that do not pay tuition. They're trying to keep... Transportation doesn't apply to us, but that's going to be level funded. Circuit breaker will probably be level funded. They also increased out-of-district tuition calculations. But there are also other decreases to the formula. Last year, the percentage for inflation calculation was over three percent. This year is only one point five five. So, in balance, even though we've lost students, even though the state percentage of contribution is less, we're actually going to get about forty thousand dollars more in Chapter Seventy. Obviously, nowhere nears any of these increases. But we're not losing out in the Chapter Seventy. And, you know, that's in part because the governor has proposed fixing some of the pieces, or at least moving in the direction of fixing some of the pieces of the formula that we're not anywhere near, close to reality or what the real costs are. And I'm hoping that the House and the Senate... I see no reason why they shouldn't support the governor's proposal, so hopefully, these will actually come through. And in years to come, hopefully, they'll fix a little bit more of the formula as we go along. But that's the... That's where I see us at this point. We could certainly have a subcommittee meeting. We could actually have the principals start to bring this information. I can have Melissa calculate the contractual obligations by building and begin the discussions with school councils and staff so that we can begin the process of, is this really what we want to present to the town?
I just would like actually to make one comment. I would also... This is something that I do feel strongly about. I think a few years ago, we cut that our music teacher up here to part-time. And I really think we need to start looking at how to make that a full-time position again. You know, whether it be this year, next year, I don't know. But, you know, that's something that I think is crucial to providing the kids with a well-rounded education. And we're not doing that right now with that particular portion. You know, and I think that's something that's not being looked at based on this budget. And, you know, I think that's important up here. We do have it in all the other schools, and it just drops off. With the addition of two thousand and sixteen, I think it is, it's going to be state-mandated that the students have a full year of fine art. And the way we're set up right now, our students are only required to take a quarter of a year. So, we're going to be forced to do that in the next cycle regardless. So, I do think that's something that this budget isn't addressing. And it was cut a couple of years ago when all those cuts were made. As well as the fees. You know, I really wish we could go at some of these fees and chip away at them somehow because our parents are still feeling the brunt of it. And, you know, the busing fees, as well as the athletic fees. It's up there.
Doc, do you have a total of the sped amount?
What do you mean?
For each school, we have some sped line items in each one of these. Do we have a total or anywhere?
We can add them up.
But that... In these line items, that's all the sped that we're asking for.
Additional cost, yes.
Is all of the sped in these requests mandated items?
There are two items in here that, for example, the sped tuition at the middle school, that would be new. That is a pending case. The same thing with the sped tu... I'm sorry, that was the elementary school. The middle school sped tuition and sped transportation, again, those are pending, but we're pretty sure we're going to need them.
Okay.
Then there's a sped tuition at the elementary.
Those are new students.
New students that we're expecting we will be responsible for starting next year.
Anything else on this? I don't know if, at this point, you want to now have the budget. So, I'm glad we got through that, and I know I wanted to hear it. And at least the principals got to give some input because some of these are different than what we saw a few weeks ago and get some background to it. Maybe now the budget subcommittee can meet before we get together next time and do whatever you guys feel you need to do and bring it back to us.
In the past, usually, we get some sort of guidance as to... Or the administration gets together at the administrative meetings, either whittles down the list or makes some proposals as to what we think would be feasible to ask the town for. But that didn't work so well last year, so we're quite open to ideas.
And we also cut six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars out of our budget. So, we're already behind me at all.
We didn't cut the budget, we cut the requests.
Out of our requests.
And ended up with a zero... Zero budget, except for the...
Incorrected means...
Sorry.
Well, we're still talking about the next steps. I came into this meeting, I made it pretty clear that I thought I knew what the steps were. There's many pages attached, which is listed as, I don't know... Some pages that are FY fourteen and some pages that are FY thirteen. That's part of what was a little confusing as I was looking through it. But is this what you want the budget subcommittee to look at, these pages?
That would be the starting point, yes.
This is what we should schedule a meeting for, for the budget subcommittee? All right. Well, then, that... We'll make sure we get that scheduled.
Do you want to suggest some times?
No, we'll go through the same process that we do with all meetings. I don't have a time handy tonight, but...
Our next meeting is...
The thirteenth of February.
Your next available date, when we're available. I think we can do that offline.
No, no, all I'm suggesting is that it would need to be posted. In order to get it in before our next meeting, it would need to be posted no later than...
Well, we could have a meeting next week.
February eighth. I'm just, no. I'm just saying, because it was... Because we hit the holiday and whatnot last time. I'm just saying, as long as they notify you by February eighth, then this one can get in. Mike or Tony will just get together and let you know. And that is public, so if anybody wants to attend, it'll be posted. Personnel?
The personnel piece that you have there is basically giving you an idea of... When you ask about why is the budget what it is, most of it deals, goes right back to the staff that we have. What I gave you was who the people are, at what building. And then I gave you the historic background to it, where people were and what positions we had some years ago before we had the cuts. So, as people look at the budget, they can understand where we were, where we are now, and why the budget is what it is, including why the contractual obligations are what they are.
So, the page that says Alisee Macumber, two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, with listing Julie as the principal.
Those are this year's.
And then, when you go to the next one, it says Alisee Macumber, Susan Wilkinson, principal. That was previous what it was set up.
Yes. Is to give an idea.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see it. Okay.
All right. As just background information for the budget.
Okay. Any questions on this? Westport Middle School update?
As you know, we are doing four testings a year. This is the second-quarter testing. We tested quite an extensive list of rooms, one-fourth of the rooms in the school. Two buildings that have been high in the past are still coming up as high. But if you take a look at the second-quarter testing, the map, the latest readings on all those areas shows that there's only one office that's not being used now. And what was an office that was used more for storage, two fifty-five, those are the only two rooms that have not come down below three hundred nanograms per meter cube in terms of the airs. We did have some testing of wipe samples, which test different areas of rooms. Some of them came up high. One of the things we investigated after that is, the building is on a two-week cycle because we have X number of custodians. So, besides doing the regular duties, we have added to them to do a thorough cleaning, hapa-vacuuming... to do a thorough cleaning, HEPA vacuuming, and web mopping, and web wiping all hard surfaces in a rotating basis. When they did the wipe tests, the areas that came up high were the next scheduled to be cleaned. So basically, they've had two weeks of dust collection. So the only real way to deal with that, even though the airs came low, so it's not pretty much in the air, it's just dust accumulating over a two-week period in certain areas, would be to shorten that period, which would mean, I'm not sure how we would do it because it just means the staff can't get to everything on a more regular basis. The HEPA vacuuming and all that. It's additional cleaning that they do.
And that room wasn't being used, that office, so it's just sitting there collecting dust?
No, they were on the rooms as well.
Just in reflection to anything about a room that isn't being used, I looked at some wipe samples from multiple rooms that were in the... Above the limits that we want to allow. I didn't know that the rooms aren't being used. Because that's not... If the rooms aren't being used, that's great, but...
A couple of the rooms tested with high samples were those two high rooms, but a couple were not. So in other words, you may have dust on the floor, but you don't have high concentrations in the air. Just because you have a low concentration in the air doesn't mean there's no PCBs. It just means there's very low concentrations of PCBs. Whether they accumulate to the point where a dust sample shows that they're PCBs, it just means we gotta clean those rooms either more frequently, probably all rooms more frequently, or do additional removal of PCBs because we know there's still PCBs in the building.
All right, so we'll be...
I feel like at this point, we're spinning our wheels, honestly, on this. Carolina?
I mean, I'm looking at the first quarter test and then the second quarter test. And it's clearly been a reduction as far as the air testing is concerned. And the explanation of rooms that were wiped that came in high were the rooms that were going to be on the cleaning next rotation. Kinda makes sense. If those rooms had been cleaned, they probably wouldn't have come up high.
No, but finding out what the source is.
It's there.
It's just there.
It's just there.
We do know that there's, you know, materials still in the building with PCBs.
The hallways.
The hallways, the stairways. We know there's some concentrations, for example, in the old drop ceilings. It's not a part of how they were made, but they probably have...
Because it's underneath walls and stuff.
Right, it already has collected dust over the 30, 40 years that the building's been in use. And you open and close a door, and the ceiling tiles shake a little and dust comes out.
Where are we at with the engineering?
This data went to the engineers. We also did a short study. One of the things we wanted to know is, we've been running the building at ventilation rates that are much higher than the building was designed to handle. So one of the things we wanted to know is, if the building were to be fixed, would we need to revamp or redesign the HVAC system for the whole building if it was continued to be used? What we did is, we took three rooms, one that was historically high, one that had been high, then low, I don't know, that had been historically low. We shut down all the ventilation to those rooms, let them sit. First, we tested, then we shut all the ventilation, tested again to see if there was a jump in the actual numbers in the airs. And we didn't see a jump. What that probably tells us is that you don't have to revamp the system. I mean, the system's old, there may be components that we may wanna replace anyway because it's old.
But it's efficient and working.
It's efficient as it is, and probably dialing the system back to normal ventilation rates would not affect the numbers in terms of the airs.
So up to this point, we haven't dialed any of them back in any room?
No. We just did the test, came up with no change in the airs, no significant change before and after shutting down the ventilation in those rooms. So it's what's left in the building that needs to get removed was probably going to be the task at hand.
So when are we expected to get something back from the engineer, the engineers on?
Now that the engineer has this, I know he's began to calculate the per-square-footage, how much, how many windows, trying to get quotes on that. He's looking at the removal of the old ceiling tiles and putting in new ceilings, what that's gonna cost. He's working on it.
Is that the study of just the middle school building?
Yes.
Just the middle school.
When are we gonna have any report on the... Or did we receive a report other than these are the numbers? Have we had anyone from our air quality wipe testing make any conclusions on what it means to have these results?
The only conclusions that, and it was just talking to them on the phone, was, one, the, we do know that in those rooms, there are materials in the ceiling tiles. There's materials that have been contaminated over the years, including the paint. We have, even the cement has absorbed some. So we know that that's probably what's causing some of the high numbers in those two rooms. We do know that, for example, he sent us to look at the schedule of the cleanings because of the wipe samples. So his conclusion is, if you want the wipe samples to come back always clean, then you have to do that kinda cleaning every day, but you're gonna have to add staff. The rest, he's passed on to the engineer to do the study, and when that's done, they will report back.
So we haven't had an interpretation of the most recent results from Dr. Miller?
The one I talked to is Bob May.
Right, but his specialist who reviews the results is Miller. And he's the one that typically writes up the conclusions from that company after, you know, that yes, this meets all EPA standards. I think we need to have a interpretation from, as you indicated, the specialists or something on one of your emails that would have... I understand why it might be happening, but those levels, what that means, that it's safe. Can we get that from the testing company?
I can certainly ask him to provide additional information. I know, you know, they provided that the air levels, which is the part that most people worry about because you're breathing it in, were below those levels.
I'm worried about the wipe levels, so that, so we can have a look at both.
Anything else on the middle school? All right, on to the action agenda. MSBA Statement of Interest process is open again.
The last time this happened, I had put in several statements of interests. In many cases, the statement of interest, actually, there were several. Some more than one per building, depending on which way the school committee wanted to go. At this point, I'm trying to get ahead of it and ask, if we're going to write statement of interest, are we gonna write them for all the buildings? For one building? Are we going to ask whether we close buildings, leave buildings open? Do we build new buildings? Which way? Because I wrote six the last time, and I just wanna know, do I write for each and every possibility, and what possibilities you would like me to write?
Well, I think we...
If you want me to write them.
I think we missed this opportunity last year, and I think we absolutely need to get ourselves on the list because it doesn't mean that if we move up the list, it doesn't mean we have to respond to the fact that we're next in line. So we, I think, with the uncertainty of what we're going to be doing, I think we definitely need to make sure we make this this time and get in there. Personally, I think the safe thing is to cover our bases. Michael?
Yeah, I don't... What we did not apply for last year was some options. I think the obvious option before us now is to replace the middle school and close it down, and that's what we should be pursuing. I would certainly support a statement of interest that we wanna rebuild a middle school. That was what was not in the options that we selected last year.
A new school.
What grade levels would you see in that middle school? Just middle school and no other, no touching any of the other buildings? Because that has to go into the statement of interest.
I just, didn't we have a discussion that they would not contribute to the building of a new middle school? Because that school was not...
No, they will contribute to the building of a new middle school. They would not contribute to anything having to do with the removal of PCBs unless it was ancillary to a, an improvement to the building. So if you're removing, for example, the windows and the caulk has to go with it, the removal of the caulk could be covered as part of that. But if, you know, all you have is ceiling tiles that have PCBs and you have to take them out, they would not cover that. So for example, if you have the walls around the window openings impregnated with PCB and you have to either remediate it or cut out part of the cement, that part they would not cover. So there's parts of that, if you're refurbishing the middle school, they would not cover. If you're going to knock down the building, my guess is they would not cover. They would probably cover, if they approve building a new building, they'll probably cover tearing down the old building, but not the additional cost of disposing of the materials because they're PCB-related. So it'll be parts of it that they do not cover.
Just to fully explain, my interest is to, a statement of interest, to build a new middle school on different grounds than that building. It's got nothing to do with knocking down, dealing with hazardous waste. I want us to get out of the PCB business, and I wanna build a new middle school. I would like to have the application reflect the current grades that are in our middle school. If we need to make an adjustment to that flaw plan afterwards, fine. But we should be making an emergency application to build a new middle school. And that has been my view for quite some time.
I would just like to say, I'm not opposed. I think in a perfect world, I agree with you 100%, Mike. I would love to just build a new school. I hesitate only because I don't know that it would be fully supported by the town. However, I would support a statement of interest, supporting a new school because it gets us in the list and it at least keeps that option open. In addition, I would really like to see another statement of interest put in to, which would also include closing the middle school, but also creating a junior, senior high, putting in addition on to this school and creating a junior, senior high campus of sorts where now we're also able to share some resources, maybe improve some of the extracurricular numbers that we've had here had issues. There's a lot of different, to me, benefits of doing that. But it at least gives us another option to discuss as we move down the road. Though I'm not opposed at all to putting in a, if the town said, let's go build a new school, I'd be right behind. But like you, I'm tired of the PCB business. And I see that school just forever and ever being used as a school, just causing problems. And you never know if you're gonna go into a classroom one day and you're gonna get a high number and you've gotta close the classroom or dust samples and wipe samples. And it just doesn't seem like something you should be doing in a school on a consistent basis. I would like to see a second one put in for something along those lines as well.
Each statement of interest has to stand on its own. So if you were to put in a statement of interest for expansion of the high school and add, say, one or two grades, what would happen to the other two grades? Or would you make it such an expansion that basically the new building that Mike's requesting would be added to this one?
I'm sorry, what was that?
If you take two grades out of the middle school?
That I got, I did get that point. I missed that part.
Well, the other, the other...
Well, I'm open to discussion, I'm just...
Well, I just need to know because one entails expanding this and doing something with that building? Or just tearing down that building or leaving it alone, abandoning it? Where do the other two grades go if you do a junior?
We have four schools in this town. We should probably have two. We should build a new middle, high school, new building. I think to build a new middle school, I think we'd just be setting ourselves up for a new high school in however many years. So build a new middle, high school.
So you would abandon this building and that building?
Yes. Or turn this one into elementary, Macumber, do something in... Yes.
Okay, because...
I think this town, we could do it on two schools. Do the elementary and the Mac together somewhere, some building, something, and build a new middle and high school. One building, one big one.
Which is sort of where I was going, it's just a different scenario.
It's the same, it's my plan. If you realize that, I anticipate one of the best sites the town owns is land that adjoins this school. So you don't have to rebuild the high school. If it was on the same grounds, you would get the benefit of it.
But at that point, the cost to bring this building up to code with the...
You don't have to bring the building up to code because you're not making an addition. That's what you're avoiding.
Right. If you do the addition, then you do have to address all of the ADA needs and whatnot. If you did a new building, then obviously you wouldn't. But, I mean, we're on the same page, just different ways to get there. Carolina?
I heard you say that each project has to stand on itself. So it can't be dependent on the building of the second thing? Is that what you're saying?
No, you can put, in other words, you would have to say, if you're splitting a building up, you would have to say, what happens to the building receiving one set of grades? And what happens to the other building receiving the other set of grades? And what happens to the building that you're baking? And you're abandoning it, refurbishing, giving it away? What are you doing? Each one of the buildings has to be addressed individually on a separate statement of interest. So that's why I'm trying to figure out which way you want to reconfigure the district, which is basically what you're trying to do. Or is it just abandon the middle school, put a new middle school wherever, close to this one so you can do the sharing? Again, you do nothing to this building, but that's one approach. But that would require two statement of interests. One that says, we're abandoning the old building, we want a new building. That's two statement of interests under his proposal.
My question is more, you end up with two proposals, and what if one gets accepted and the other doesn't? What do you do with those two grades that you've just...
You would have, you would have to write it as separate statements.
So that they're contingent on each other?
They're contingent on each other.
That's what I wanted to call, because you said they had to stand on their own, so that's why I was confused.
Well, they have to stand on their own because the MSBA can say, we will first approve this one in this timeline, and two years from now, we may approve the next one so that you can move into that. So you have to have some flexibility. In other words, you may not be able to abandon the middle school immediately because it will take some time to build anything if that's the direction you wanna go in. If you're splitting the buildings or the building and adding to other buildings, you would probably make the additions, move kids that are in those current buildings into the addition. Move kids that are in those current buildings into the additions so you can refurbish the old part and then do the move. So this is a multi-year process.
And we gotta, and we gotta keep in mind, I mean, yes, the middle school's got the PCB issue, but it's still the newest building we have. So to, to just, you know, let, take the PCB.
The elementary schools are newest.
And the high school has an addition that's newer.
Yeah.
Okay, that part of it is newer. I think when you add the older and the newer, I think it's still lower. But the point is to build a, one building, one specific building, say a middle school building, I think is nearsighted, you know? That doesn't take a look into the, I mean, just, just combining two buildings together would, over the years, would save you a ton of money.
My, my concern with the middle school.
Our capital needs with all these buildings are ridiculous.
Right. Well, and my concern with the middle, my biggest concern with the middle school, aside from being in the PCB business, this just adds on to it is the list that Mike Duarte brought to us two weeks ago, um, of some of the very large septic and whatnot. If that stuff, if anything down there goes to a point where we now have to close that school, that is a huge, another big dollar amount that we're gonna be spending down there. In addition to if we do go ahead and fix the PCBs and clean it, now we not, we will be likely have to address all of the ADA needs, which that particular building has by far the most ADA needs, um, in upgrades as far as I could see. Um, we're, we're running into huge costs associated with upgrading and we're not really improving it. We are sort of putting a Band-Aid on, you know, and, and still stuck with a very old building that needs a lot of renovation. And it's not doing the students any good.
The high school has similar issues though.
It does.
Yeah, we just haven't dug deep enough.
And the, the elementary school, my, my concern there is, um, we're pretty tight on space there as well.
You'd have to, you'd have to build a new middle, high, whatever you call these buildings.
Junior, senior.
Junior, senior school, building, whatever. If you say you took out the fifth grade and kept the fifth grade at the elementary, obviously we'd need to expand. And if you close the MAC and put those kids there, you know, obviously, we'd have to expand another building to be able to close two buildings, obviously, but. But I think that would be the way to go, I mean.
Move the elementary and MAC to this building?
No, expand, expand the elementary and move the MAC there.
Didn't you look into that?
I don't, I don't think the elementary has a lot of room for expansion.
Well, we could come down towards the middle school. I mean, that would be, you know, if we wouldn't.
Well, I, I.
Well, I believe the building that they built in the town of Wakefield that has the, uh, the, it's on the list of pre-approved school model buildings. What they built as a middle school would, would nicely fit into our needs and had strong lyrics that we pursue an application for a new middle school. Uh, buying the pre-designed buildings, uh, again, they're not pre-designed buildings, that the design is, uh,
A model.
A model school.
Right.
And I, it's, it's a way to save some money and take advantage of centralizing. More of the administrative duties, but now they're all within the same campus. It's always made sense and continues to.
I have no problem submitting a statement of interest for a new school. I, but I, I do think we should submit a statement of interest that includes multiple options so that, um, so that if we get to the town and they say, no, we won't consider this, but we'll consider this. We have something to fall back on. Um, yes.
Um, just two questions. Um, does, does the SOI require a hot copy of required local vote documentation?
They would, yes.
Okay. So if they did, would it make sense to have es, cost estimates of, cause you all have great ideas, of each of your ideas to figure out what the least expensive is? Cause when you go to the town and ask them to vote, I mean, if we tell them this is the least expensive, we've done our, you know, our, this is the documentation we've done on due diligence. Maybe it is a new middle school. I don't know. Maybe it's combining it. But if we had cost estimates, it would probably make the most sense.
You have to pay for those.
Excuse me?
You have to pay for those studies, which is one of the major issues we've had.
So, um, I don't.
The, the concern with the, um, is some districts do it that way. They, they do the cost estimates first, then they do the statement of interest. The statement of interest does not, um, basically put either the, the town or the school committee on the hook to do anything. It simply sends a message to the MSBA that there's a town in Massachusetts that has either issues or they wanna build a new building or they wanna renovate a building. That's all it does. It does not commit the town to any money or anything of that nature. The problem is the statement of interest period opens and closes in a very short window every year. And if you miss it, your town, your project doesn't even get on the list. So every year you spend saying, well, we don't have the, the numbers, let's wait another year, pushes back perhaps three, four, five more years because sometimes we may think it's the most pressing project, uh, in the Commonwealth. But they may have a list of twenty other places they're gonna fund first. So you may go in year two or year three or year four. So the sooner you put in a statement of interest, obviously the, uh, the MSBA wants to know that there's been some discussion. So the only ones who do the vote is the school committee and the board of selectmen. Doesn't necessarily go to town floor.
Oh, it doesn't? Okay.
It's, it's not, we're not at that level yet. But it may be a place to start the discussion here and at the board of selectmen and then use that as a launching point of saying, okay, here are the things that we would like to explore, hopefully with the help of the MSBA. Can we put together some monies for a study to see how much that would cost? Because then it would be, alright, now we have to sell this to the town and explain it. And then get it approved again by the MSBA.
And part of that engineering study that we were referring to earlier, that is some of that. That is to give us kind of a cost idea of what it's gonna cost us to remove the PCBs and, and all of that at the middle school and, you know, fix the ceilings and all that. So that's a small piece of it. Um, I was just, I happened to sit at the, the CIPC meeting this past week. I just dropped in. There was some discussion by them about maybe taking some of that money and helping to fund a more, uh, broader district-wide exploration of what could happen. Um, so there may be some opportunities there also. This is just preliminary. This is like, hey, these are a couple of things we're thinking about. We just wanna add our names to the list. And if it gets to the point where we're number one, hopefully the timing is right that we've explored all the options, gotten all the pricing, done whatever we needed to do to try to explain to the town, these are the options. This costs this, this costs that. What do you wanna do? Um, but we haven't got to that point yet. You're right though. At that point, yes.
I wonder if there are other towns. I, for some reason, recall another town that did something, a, a middle school, high school recently. I wonder if there's.
There's actually a lot of them. I mean, you've got, um.
That tends to be the way to go today.
You've got Oliverames that is now a junior, senior high. You've got Old Rochester that is also a junior, senior high. A lot of them are having sort of a campus of sorts where they're, you know, they're all on the same area and they're using shared resources. So they may share the auditorium, they may share the cafeteria, um, but they're sharing some collective spaces like that. And then they're, they're keeping the students separated. It's almost like two separate schools except for those major spaces. Ducksbury's doing it.
Thank you. And I just, I wonder if that would help with retention too, just.
Well, and that's my thought. You've now built a bridge between your eighth graders and your ninth graders. They have some continuity from going to eighth to ninth. It's not really like a new school, but it kind of is still a new school. So they may be, uh, able to share some teachers. If you've got a junior, senior campus, whether it be middle school or high school on the same, um.
Plot of land or.
Or one school shared or whatever, but you can definitely share resources that way too. So I think there's a lot of, there's some good discussion and, um, you know, it, it's something to explore moving forward with the board of selectmen, with the town, with all the other town boards. This is just preliminary discussion. But mainly because we wanna get our statement of interest in that timeframe. Anything else on this? Michael? No?
So.
Is your hand kind of up? No?
So far, I only, the only thing I heard loud and clear is no middle school, add a new middle school. Are, are we putting any other statement of interest with MAC or WES or high school, middle school or splitting middle school grades?
I, I think we need to do more than one option. I don't think we can just do the one option. I think that that's what we've been talking about.
Junior, senior high school and a, an expand.
React to that, but I think.
Expand the, uh, the elementary school or, yeah, it would be expand the elementary school and build a new junior. What do they call it?
Junior, senior high.
Junior, senior high school.
So if you're building a new junior, senior high school, what are you doing with this building? You're abandoning two buildings?
You throw it through a big machine and turn it into road base.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, that's what I would do.
So you're abandoning two buildings, building a new building and expanding one of the other buildings?
Yes.
Are you asking to expand the WES? I don't know if that's possible.
One would make better sense. I would imagine it would be the WES. I mean, if it's just a matter of space, I, I don't know.
We, we could do that. And, and then, so you're abandoning three buildings? You're abandoning three buildings, adding to the WES and building a new junior, senior high.
Yeah, I'll take that.
Wanted to be clear.
Michael?
Can just add my concern. Uh, we, we've taken the hammer to an expansion project in the past. The green repairs project, we looked at a building, we wanted to replace some windows. As we swung that hammer, we got hit in the head. Let's not expand any buildings. Let's replace buildings as needed.
So the next option would be to forget, expanding the elementary school, just build a new one. So two new schools.
We're gonna have to kick the press out soon because we don't want them writing any of this down to me.
I didn't know we had a problem. I thought the elementary school.
No, we absolutely want, we want people, listen, people, we have to start talking. I mean, people really have to get serious about.
We also have to be rational.
Our elementary school is, is a great school.
I, we also have to be rational too. And I still, you know, I firmly believe that we, we, we need to keep an option of putting an addition onto the high school as a junior, senior high. And now you, you bump your, um, maybe your two, three, four, five, two, or three, four, fives at the middle school. I mean, at, at the WES. And you put an addition on the MAC and you make a K one, two down there.
Yes. I think he's one of the options he had.
That was, that was.
That, I mean, I think.
When, when the, when we had those people down several months ago, I mean, I think they made it pretty clear, the engineers, that the, uh, you know, the rehabs that we're talking about for some of these buildings. Are, you know, neck and neck with the cost of a new building.
I understand that, but I still, I'm not suggesting that that's what we are doing, but at least we have that option.
I just mean as, 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 you know, as opposed to the middle or even, you know, even this school or, you know, it's not, it's not just new paint on the walls.
No, I know that. But until we've explored the costs associated with building the new building versus expanding another building, I still think we at least need to make the state aware that these are some of the options that we're thinking about. While we are looking at all of our numbers and crunching and, you know, whatever else. I mean, I think a K one and two model would be wonderful from a parent's perspective. Um, and getting our sixth and fifth graders out of the middle school, I also think would be wonderful. Um.
I just to let people know, even if they were to approve any of these options, that we're only looking at about forty-six percent reimbursement. Is that correct?
Yeah. That was the latest.
Well, yeah.
They may rea, readjust those as years go on.
Right.
Changes in equity values in different towns.
But I think the more.
Hundred million, you know, just tall numbers out here. A hundred million dollar option would still cost us fifty-four million.
Right. But I, I still think it's not hurting us to put in multiple options. It doesn't lock us into doing anything, but it keeps our options open so that if we decide that something isn't going to work for whatever reason, but it gives us that opportunity to explore. And I, I'll be honest, I think maybe we add as much as, maybe not all of us want to do this, we add an option for renovating the middle school. So that at least if the town says, no, we want you to keep that building, we can at least look to the MSBA for some help with the cost. Otherwise, we're going to have the entire renovation project on our own shoulders. As much as we may not want to do that, the town may not want to do what we want.
Well, that's a given. I mean, that's what we're thinking. That's why we're doing this study is to get that.
He needs to hear that.
Oh, yeah, no, that needs to be, obviously that needs to be.
Well, we also have a deadline of April.
April nine.
Which is around the corner. We're at the end of January.
April nine.
Like I said, the school committee needs to vote on it, the board of selectmen needs to vote on it. I think, I'm jotting down what you think your options are. I think we should bring them to the CIPC. Let them present it to this electment. So the conversation starts over there because if we find that they're not going to even agree to some of these ideas to put on a statement of interest, you may vote them here. They're not gonna vote them there.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
So again, I don't wanna waste the time putting together these lengthy applications.
What you're saying is the board of selectmen needs to approve us, the submittal of the SOI.
Yes. It's a double approval. Because they wanna make sure that people in the town are talking about a town-wide effort, not just the schools.
Right. But I think at least adding as many options as we can.
Well, you would bring these.
Opens up discussion.
Right. You would bring these options to probably the CIPC because they're probably, if you bring them to the board of selectmen, I own a board of selectmen, I said, did you bring them to the CIPC?
Well, we can ask, um, over there where. Or, or we could just ask you.
Oh, you can.
Have our liaison in the room.
In which order would you like to see them go? Would it go to you guys first or to the CIPC first or?
Would be you're, you're testing the air.
I'll shoot from the hip a little bit, Michelle. I assume that if you came to us, we'd, we'd ask you, as was suggested, have we had capital improvement input?
Okay, so there's your answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
So have ideas for the next one?
I have, I have three options. Abandon the middle school, build a new middle school.
Say that again. What are your?
One would be to abandon the middle school or and add a middle school, a new one. Option two would be to abandon, this was your option, abandon the middle school, high school and MAC, build a new junior, senior high school, expand the WES to have.
That was his option. Don't point at me.
Oh, put my name all over that one. I'm not all over it.
And then. The other option is to abandon the middle school and addition, if I understood it correctly, MAC, K two, WES, three, five, and high school addition to handle six through twelve.
Well, you've got four grades at the middle, at the elementary right now, so.
But they're busting.
Huh?
They're busting.
No, you can't put anyone else in there without that.
But you're taking one and two up.
Well, you could take one, two, three, and then just have.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Four, five, six.
Okay.
At the WES.
Okay, but either way, I, I mean, the numbers are, it's the same numbers of grades, so, yeah, that's fine.
The reason why I'm saying that, if you look at the footprint or the land around the MAC, they have a lot more room for expansion. The WES, you would have to literally regrade that whole area where it's still parking lot.
And keep in mind that if you, if you add, let's just say, you add fifth graders and sixth graders to either one of those buildings, you know.
Four, five, six.
It isn't just a matter of adding another wing and adding ten more classrooms or whatever. I mean, you know, that, that gym at that school is enough to snuff for a fifth or sixth grader. You know, it isn't just adding a wing. I mean, that's, that's what I mean about the costs of doing that.
But that's what we need to look at.
You would need a renovation. I'm sure you would need a renovation of the, the elementary school.
That major. You, you wouldn't recognize the building after you could dump it.
I'm, I'm not so sure.
I was at Forestville two weekends ago and they actually had that. That's what they do. They have four, five and six in one building. And then they have seven through twelve, I think.
Yeah, seven through twelve, and then they have a couple of elementary schools.
So that's, I, I think.
But they're bigger.
They are bigger.
No.
It's true.
I, I'm looking at the, uh. I, I'm looking at the, uh, at the age of the buildings, and the west is the newest one, so it doesn't have as many, uh, huge concerns. So, you could do a small renovation. You could open up that gym, expand the gym, and that'd be the big renovation for the, uh, in, in terms of expansion of the elementary school, if you would consider that an expansion. So, you know, if you have three, four, five, or four, five, six, then that would accommodate those kids.
And did you add the last one that we talked about?
Which one? I guess we'll...
Just renovate the middle.
The renovation of the middle school, we have to include that.
Okay, oh. Just the middle school?
Because if the town says, this is what we want you to do...
No, I'm saying, and not put anything in it else in any of the other buildings.
All the buildings need to be upgraded anyway. If you keep four buildings, you're still upgrading the high school because this building needs work. And I don't know about the Mac, I mean, there's...
Do you wanna just, you don't have to put a SOI for every building, but you could say, hey, just renovate the middle school, renovate the high school, and somewhere down the line, we think about the other buildings. But looking to add more work.
And then, um, the first place these will go is after to us, then to the CIPC, and then to the Selectmen.
I think, wasn't your suggestion that you have a discussion at the CIPC so that they can go to the Selectmen before we start doing?
Before we're writing.
Yeah, because otherwise, he's writing ten proposals, and the first nine, the board could say, we're not interested in any of these options. So, he just wrote nine proposals for nothing.
Okay.
You have time to do that, right?
Did it the last time. I just...
Anything else on this? I do wanna reiterate to anybody that is still watching out there, submitting a statement of interest doesn't mean that's what we're doing. All it means is we're saying, these are the things we're thinking about, these are our options. It does not lock us into anything. So, make sure that the newspapers write that in there.
Oh, my God!
Yeah. Um, yeah, you get the gold star for today.
Yeah, make sure you let everybody know I'm the one that wants the new school.
Yeah, and that, that three new schools, that was Tony's.
No, two new schools.
All right, um, capital improvement needs, is that...
That's basically...
That's what we talked about the other day, so we touched on that a little bit. Approval, we did that. And I'll just mention again, um...
How wonderful.
We did get a twenty-five thousand dollar grant from the Greater Fall River Development. So, thank you very much to them. We did approve that earlier in the meeting. Approval of field trip for Westport High School to Waterville Valley in Hampshire, February twentieth, two thousand and thirteen. That is February vacation.
But it's out of, but it's out of, uh...
State.
It's out of state and it's...
No, but it was asked if this was during the school day. I'm saying, no, it is February vacation, that's all. Who, is this a group that's going or is this a club or, because it doesn't say?
I believe it's the advocates. I'm trying to put it together.
She does do that group.
The advocates is, uh, kinda like an offshoot of one of our clubs and projects that we have here at the high school. And they're trying to add some, uh, connections to the rest of the, the school community. And this was one of their projects to allow not just the students participating in project action, but other students from the schools to participate in something fun that they can do during the break.
Um, I'm not a skier, so I don't know. Maybe somebody else can tell me this. Is, how expensive is something like this? And, and so that will lead to my next question.
The students would pay for...
It says that. It says per student personal funds. So, my next question is, is there something in place to help a student that really cannot afford this? Is there some booster or now, so...
That I know of.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion on this?
Can I?
Dr. Christy Tripp.
Talk to...
All those in favor?
Sure, I'm sure that she'd take chaperones.
And February vacation, I don't think he'll be busy.
All those in favor?
Well, I will.
Yeah, there'll be nobody's paying.
Aye.
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 Opposed? Approval of the two thousand and thirteen, fourteen school calendar? I just had a parent ask me if we had approved this, and I said, not yet.
You, you have a version one in your packet. Obviously, we've been playing with this. And we brought it to the administrators. We got more feedback on that. So, on your blotters, you have version two. This is the preferred version, obviously. It's your calendar, so if you wanna change things, you're more than happy to do that. Some of the highlights of this change would be, we, we used to have staff convocation on the Thursday of the last week of August. That's when all the staff got together because we used to have, um, the parents and TAs not have to participate in the staff development. But we've added days to their contract, so, uh, we're thinking it'd be better to have convocation on the Tuesday of that week. First day would be new teacher training and orientation program. All the staff come in on the twenty-seventh. We do the get-together, welcome everybody, and then we have two days of staff development before they go away for the long, uh, weekend for Labor Day and start school on September third. So, that would be one change. The other change is this year, both New Year's and, uh, the, the Christmas Day holidays end up in the middle of the week on a Wednesday.
That's a lot of days home.
And, and, well, but the problem is, if you have, if you have, uh, if you bring the students back for two days, we have concerns that, you know, parents are gonna take extended vacations. The staff's not gonna wanna come back if we just tried to use it for our staff development. So, um, we counted the days and it can be done. Unfortunately, it brings you to the last day of school to June twentieth. If you add, it's been that way in the last few years, just the way it's fallen. But remember, you have to have five additional days in case of snow days. So, you're pushing it way out there to the very end of June if you have a very snowy year. But it, it's probably one of the few years that you would even contemplate having two weeks off for Christmas.
Um, I want a question, and I think this is something that happened this year also. November fifth...
Yes.
They're in school for a day and then professional development. Why?
It's, uh, we're trying to use the, the voting day as a staff training day.
Okay.
Because we always have the, the concern of who, who's going into what building, who's parking where. I mean, it's, it's...
No, no, that, I just wanted, I, I was just curious.
That's why we...
Because I know that happened this year, and I had a parent ask me, well, why didn't you put it on a weekend so we can go away? So...
Yeah, that always seems to be the, uh, the question, you know, like, uh, February, February vacation. You know, we, I think this year we had a professional day the Friday before or something, right? Why don't we have it the Friday before vacation?
April one.
And that allows everyone to save a lot of money on airfare. So, I, I...
Because in many cases, um, you would, you would end up with parents taking additional days, and then our attendance rates would dip and students wouldn't be receiving instruction. It's not about adding vacation. It's about instruction. It's about...
No, but I think they, they...
If you have a half day on a Friday before vacation...
If it was a professional day, then wouldn't he lose now? That might be...
No, no, no. We, we only have so many professional development days. Those are half days. So, if you put a half day on a Friday before a vacation, we're afraid that it would count as a school day. So, any kid that doesn't show up would count against our attendance. Well, you explain it to the state when we get called on the carpet for low attendance.
Okay.
That's why we, that's why we decided not to do it that way.
Motion to approve the two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen school calendar?
So moved.
We need to approve this today?
You don't have to. You're getting...
Oh, a lot of things.
A lot of things, like what? Do we need a second, though?
I don't know. How many days is it?
I'll second it. What do you wanna change?
Well, what I was just talking about.
Which day are you talking about, though?
That, that, we did that this year?
It's April.
April vacation, we have the eighteenth off because it's Good Friday.
No, it isn't.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
All right. Okay, then February, all right, then February, February vacation.
There is no half day off.
There is no one there.
No. They moved it to March tenth.
But this year, they were, it was this past year...
Wait, it says March twelfth here. Is it the tenth or the twelfth? Little calendar says...
Okay, all right. Why can't you move that March twelfth day to the, uh...
There's no holiday.
February fourteenth or fifteen.
Yeah, whatever, whatever that Friday is. And everybody would be happy.
Yeah, what's March twelve?
I, you have ten circled on the...
Oh, that's Valentine's Day, so we go back to the thirteen.
There, there were reasons.
Okay, can you, is it the tenth or the twelfth? Is this version one or two? I'm looking at the calendar, calendar.
I think we talked about the twelfth.
Which is a Wednesday.
What day is Valentine's Day this year?
It's a Wednesday.
Well, that's so people don't disappear over here.
I understand.
What day is that? Oh, you, you wanna remind her of Valentine's Day?
Hey, listen, uh...
Outlook. So, you've moved it to the twelfth, which is a Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday, sorry.
All right.
All right, so, all right, so we have Good Friday for the February vacation, so that's...
No, for the April.
No, I mean, uh, April.
Yeah.
Did we have that this year?
No, that's what I was thinking this year's earlier.
Good Friday, it's certain, the morning, the time.
Oh, it's the Roman calendar.
So, I gotta, I gotta explain this to a lot of people, you know.
I think that's the only day, and then this fifth, which is the two, but that's a voting day. We figured that one, so... I think that March day was the only day. I'm good.
What is that? Is that the heat?
The ventilation system.
Good lord.
The old ventilation system.
What are we talking about?
Took us seriously, the knock on the building.
Holy moly, I don't think I've ever heard that one. That's wind? Either that or something's not starting up.
It's not the only wind in here. Sounds like a train, doesn't it?
Keep going down.
What is that?
Maybe it's, uh, maybe it's a tornado.
It's the twelfth that got you. That's the version two.
Hey, what does tornado sound like?
Something like that.
So, we moved the tenth to the twelve?
Yeah, because they didn't want it on the Monday so people wouldn't take a long weekend and then have all these absences.
Which, which day are we talking about?
Tuesday or Friday.
You did that on purpose?
We are worried about kids learning.
Which day are we talking about?
March twelve.
And if they're not in school, they're not learning.
March twelve.
That one got moved to the twelve.
Or at least they're not learning what we're supposed to be presenting them with.
It's on a Wednesday so that people don't take off.
Our experiences...
If you have it on the Monday, people are just, it's gonna be a three-day weekend. It's all within.
Because a lot of people take it as a four or five-day weekend.
On Friday and then they won't, or Tuesday.
And now they'll take the Monday and the Tuesday off.
No, they won't.
I don't know if too many people do that.
All right. Are we gonna suggest any changes to this?
Does the motion, is this what the motion is for?
This, yes, this one here.
Do you have a second? All right?
Yes, I seconded it.
Can I call the question?
You can.
So, you, I'm asking you to call the question.
I, I can call. You good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, Tony, you kid, you got long, you kid.
You have a very long Christmas break.
Yeah, two weeks. That's great.
Yeah, you can go away for Christmas.
That's like fabulous.
Uh, approval of the minutes of Wednesday, January ninth, two thousand and thirteen. Is there a motion to approve? Oh, yeah, she did like, want me to do that down?
No, no. Hand to hand.
Talking about, were you gonna mention the, uh, we have this...
Hey, is, is there a motion to approve? The, uh, minutes? All right, I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Tony, aye. Uh, correspondence? Uh, this is today. Dirk Diamond is having their subcommittee for House Building making the transition from staff to supervisor. One-day seminar. Um, any new business requests? Comments or statements? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?